Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, October 3, 2022. Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present. With that, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law.
Okay. State your purpose.
And to the political reasons.
One more change.
To the law.
To the justice of our citizens.
Thank you very much.
With that, it brings us up to Item 4 under General, and we have an important recognition this evening, recognition of Rob and Susan Biggs. The City of Saco, when the Saco Fire Department recognized the efforts of Rob and Susan Biggs for coming to the aid of a mariner in distress on September 8, 2022, at approximately 1939 hours. The mariner had fallen from his vessel into the river in front of the Saco Yacht Club without wearing a personal flotation device and was struggling to remain afloat while clinging to the partially submerged skiff. Robyn and Susan identified the dire situation and immediately acted. Susan called 911 and provided the dispatcher with details of the incident while Rob located a skiff, oars, and two PFDs, personal flotation devices. Rob quickly rowed to the distressed mariner, providing him with a personal flotation device, and was able to take the bow line of the flooded skiff and row toward shore. Saco and Bitterford Fire Department resources were arriving on scene as Rob continued to row. Saco Marine 6 and crew came alongside Rob as he arrived at the dock. The mariner was evaluated by medical personnel and did not require transportation to the hospital. His skiff was de-watered and secured. The quick actions of Rob and Susan certainly prevented this unfortunate incident from becoming a tragedy. Thank you both for your unselfish willingness to help another in need. With that, well done. Rob and Susan were presented with the Life Safety Award pins as a symbol of appreciation and partnership of the Saco Fire Department. I think, on behalf of the City of Saco, the Saco City Council, we would like to extend our gratitude to Rob and Susan for their quick thinking and swift action that led to a rescue and a positive outcome.[1055.17][1055.17](APPLAUSE). And with that, we have a certificate for you. Certificate of recognition, this certificate is awarded to Rob and Susan Biggs for your extraordinary actions that placed high value on human life. We commend your display of bravery and quick thinking on September 8, 2022. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.[1105.33][1105.33](APPLAUSE). One for the Fire Department. Thank you very much. Again, thank you for your lifesaving actions. With that, that brings us to Item 5. There are no other general items. Item 5 on the agenda is Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Seeing no committee correspondents, moving on to Item 6, Public Comment. Only one person has signed up as of this time, and that is Bonnie Hattieris, 16 Gray Ave. Please speak directly into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Bonnie Hattieris. I live at 16 Gray Ave, Saco, Maine, and I've been a resident of the city for almost 40 years. I'm here today to talk about the $50,000 budget amendment for Pepperell Park Playground. I live in that neighborhood. I take my grandchildren there often, I mean, several times a week, and it's a valuable resource for the city. There are many children in the area, this end of Saco, who go to that playground. Yes, there's another playground at Burns. It's for older kids. There's one at Young. Most people in our neighborhood cannot walk there. I have watched the condition of this playground go downhill drastically in the last year, somewhat before that. I am an engineer by training and some experience. I still take my grandchildren there, but I'm watching it carefully. It may get to the point within the next year that it is no longer safe. Right now, it's okay, but there are so many children who use that playground, and it's not a school playground, it is a city playground, and it's very important for the citizens of the city. Therefore, I'm asking that you support this request for a budget amendment and that you move it forward onto the agenda and vote yes. Thank you very much.
That is all who has signed up to speak. If there's anyone else who would like to address the City Council, please come forward Seeing nobody seeking recognition, moving on to Article 7, or, excuse me, Agenda Item 7, Approval of Minutes. There are no minutes to approve this evening. Brings us to Item 8, Consent Agenda Items, and Item A is to approve the November and December meeting dates in your packet on Page 2. Is there any, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote on the Consent Agenda, Item A. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes 7-0. Brings us to Item 8, excuse me, excuse me, Item 9, Action Items. Up first on Page 3 in your packet is Item A, A Final Reading, Petition for Zoning Map Amendment to Rezone a Portion of the 32 Lincoln Road from Rural Conservation RC to Medium Density Residential, MDR Zone, and that is assigned to Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By petition, property owner Linda Poland requests the City Council to amend the zoning map to rezone a portion of 32 Lincoln Road, Map 101, Lot 24, from the rural conservation zone to the medium density residential zone. Subject property abuts NMDR district. The Planning Board voted 5-0 to forward a positive recommendation to the City Council during their July 19 meeting. I move to approve the final reading and adopt the proposed zoning map amendment for Map 101, Lot 24.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I don't think we've had too much discussion on this item to date, but, you know, given it's the second and final, I'm gonna state my feelings on this. So I think this particular situation is rather unique in that the Busby Park region of Saco is kind of an anomaly in that it predates the zoning ordinance. It goes back to the 1940s, you know, post-World War II, and it was largely at the time built out as a trailer park-type construction. So I think normally, given the nature that what we're essentially doing here is encroaching into the RC, the rural conservation zone, generally speaking, I wouldn't be supportive of that for various reasons. But in this particular case, I am supportive of this, particularly because we're not doing the entirety of the property, so it's really a good solution from my perspective. If we were talking about, you know, the entirety of the property or a property that wasn't a direct abutment to the medium residential density, I would have a problem because, like I said, we're at that point, be creeping into a rural conservation zone that is absent of infrastructure, which, again, I think you can go back to, all the way back to the 1967 comp plan that states we shouldn't be growing into areas that do not have infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, a roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to Item B on Page 4 in your packet, a final reading, Amendment to Section 7.1 of Saco's Zoning Ordinance for Small-Scale Renewable Energy Facilities. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saco's zoning ordinance and other land use regulations do not contain provisions for regulating or permitting small-scale renewable energy facilities, such as solar arrays, on private properties despite their potential to negatively impact nearby areas. Staff proposed amendments to Saco's zoning ordinance which would minimize potential impacts from these facilities by establishing minimum setbacks, height limits, screening requirements, and permitting procedures. After holding a public hearing during the July 19 and August 2 meetings, Saco's Planning Board voted 5-0 to forward a positive recommendation to City Council to adopt the attached amendments. I move to approve the final reading and adopt the proposed amendments to Section 7.1 of Saco's zoning ordinance.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Yes, or second?
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I don't see the pertinent staff here, but I guess I'll just go ahead and...
The city planner is not able to be here tonight. City Administrator Canrath is here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. And I think I understand this, I just wanted to point it out to council, there's an amendment to the commercial solar energy system as part of this ordinance, and I think, the way I read this, the intent here is currently, we have this ordinance that we passed as part of the recent zoning ordinance revision where anything over 2,000 square feet is a commercial solar energy system. So the issue that has occurred, at least my understanding of it, is that because of that, there are rooftops in the industrial park or even in other areas, like, say, for example, Saco Island, where they have larger buildings, that they haven't been able to put solar arrays up without it being considered a commercial solar array. So I think that this definition change is an attempt to correct that, and I just wanted to point it out to council so they were aware that they were also voting on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I actually find that to be a benefit of this ordinance in that we're, in my mind, we need to strike a balance between encouraging renewable energy, such as solar systems, and facilitating their use in our city. We signed our climate, our declaration of climate emergency. We've made commitments towards reducing greenhouse gases and the impact of our city on the climate, while also, in this case, restricting some forms of solar energy, such as pole-mounted solar energy in front yards and in dense zones. And so I think by facilitating and clarifying and easing the installation of rooftop solar while somewhat restricting the pole-mounted solar, this ordinance really helps strike that balance. It encourages that which is appropriate for our neighborhoods while discouraging that which isn't. So that's a positive feature in my mind.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to Item 10, New Business. There are two items on the agenda under New Business, Page 8, Article, excuse me, Page 8, Item A, Budget Amendment Number 2, Fire Department HVAC Air Handling Unit. Deputy Chief Pendleton, do you have anything to add on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not really, I'm kind of on a preview of the project. I kind of know some of the details if there's a question, but I'm not sure what's in the bag. I might explain.
Thank you.
I think Dodd and O'Connell has it well laid out.
Director Fox, I see your hand up back there. Did you want to come down and... Did you want to come down and...
Just for a little clarification. So this is a project that's been ongoing for a while to address through the Facilities Division. So Don Roth, our Facilities Manager, has been dealing with it. There were indoor air quality issues kind of during the second half of our sort of COVID lockdown. Couple of years there was when it sort of started to rear its ugly head. The more fresh air that was being brought into the building so people could live there and stay safe and have good indoor air quality was bringing in too much moisture. So there were some mold issues in the ductwork. And all of that has been remedied 100%. It's just to make sure that doesn't come back and to allow the fresh air exchanges sort of post-COVID that are occurring in public buildings. The way that building was designed, it needs, the fresh air coming in has to be conditioned or dried out or that problem could come back. So right now, as a temporary measure, to make sure all the ducts stay clean, they're running probably 10 dehumidifiers in that building. This is a rooftop unit that costs about $110,000 by the time you do the roof penetrations and the work. So this is not whether or not we do it. It's going to happen regardless of the budget amendment. What the budget amendment would do is fund it and allow all of the other planned projects for this year at other facilities to move forward. If the budget amendment didn't move forward, we would have to drain other accounts for HVAC safety-related facility upgrades and fund it that way. So it's not a, are we doing this or not? That has to happen. So we're looking to schedule that as soon as we can, as soon as the equipment can be delivered. But it was thought that not canceling planned projects may be a good way to go and just use fund balance from last year's leftover.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on this item? Budget Analytics Director Solis, do you have anything further to add on this than what's been presented? I see her shaking her head no, so there's no other further information. Any questions? Is there a counselor who wants to be the council resource? Counselor Purdy, okay. Are there any objections to this moving forward? On the agenda, no objections, okay. That brings us to Item B, Budget Amendment Number 3, the Pepperell Park Playground on Page 10 in your packet, put forth by Counselor Johnston at last meeting. Here before you for discussion. Parks and Rec Director Summer, is there anything further on this that we need to know about, other than what's been presented?
Really, I'm here to answer any questions. There's nothing more than, besides what's in the packet, know that this playground's about 25, 26 years old. It is at the end of its life, as you see the rust on it and so forth. Sadly, I am the one who built it 25, 26 years ago too, so maybe that's half the issue. But that's pretty much what the life structure of these are. It's about 25, 26 years. They'll begin to rust out, become an issue. You know, just in the prime example, the ladder, the, one of the pieces that's broken is about a $1,500 to $1,800 fix. So if you try to piecemeal this together, you know, you're gonna come up on the same cost price as you probably would be to replace it whole.
Any questions for Director Summer? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. Given the 25, 26-year lifespan of a playground structure and the hopefully imminent construction of a new elementary school, what are the long-term plans for Pepperell Park? And what role would a play structure have in those plans?
Do you want my whole dream?
I want the whole dream, Director Summer. Yes, sir.
Ideally, the idea of that playground, if the schools vacate that land, we'll bring it back to what it was in the '60s as a destination park. There will be a playground associated with that playground. It might not be in that same location, but it very well could be. But from now before that dream truly comes true, you're probably still looking at 10 to 15 years. So, you know, I've been trying to kind of baby this playground around since I've gotten back in with the hope that this process would be a little farther down the road with the schools, knowing that we still have at least a good solid 10 years. That playground's not gonna hold up. And it really is a time now to really make decisions. But ideally, a gazebo, bring the pond back, the fountains, bridge. It would be more of a passive park, but a playground would be very much associated with that park.
And are these playgrounds movable? Should they need to rise?
They can be moved. There's a cost associated with it as you jackhammer the concrete off it and so forth. I would bring in the company that would either put it together for us or they would at least move it for us when the time comes, if that's not the location that this playground will sit at.
Thank you.
Counselor Archer?
Yes, in consideration of the new equipment that will come, going back to the '90s, back over near in the upper corner of where Beach Street was, used to be this like 15-foot pole. I don't even remember what it was called.
Fireman's pole.
Huh?
It used to be a fireman's pole.
But it was like a, I remember it as like a fort. This big giant metal pole fort. Can we bring that back? I know it was very dangerous and all, but I remember I enjoyed it.
Well, it depends if you want to sign off on it.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I was a resident of King Street for 30 years. Raised my family there, my three daughters. And that park is a very, very valuable asset to that neighborhood. It is, although it's adjacent to a school, I think of it more as a neighborhood resource, even though the school gets the benefit from that, so. And I happened, I went over to look at the playground. I have a little deja vu today, but it is in tough shape and needs to be replaced. And I think we owe it to the neighborhood children in that area that, like mine, that rely on that for recreation, making friends, having fun. So I am wholeheartedly in support of this initiative.
I appreciate that.
Counselor McPhail, then Counselor Johnston.
As the playground being in my ward, and I also live literally 50 feet from it.
You do?
I do. As Counselor Hatch and everybody, you know, we're all on board on this. It's just, it is time.
Yep.
I see the kids every day from the school, as well as on the weekends. I saw the activity during 2020. And when kids couldn't get out and play, that's where they were.
Right.
Parents would let them swing. They were doing exercise programs. And again, you know, thank you to the residents for all the emails and the outreach from the last couple of days with it. It does show, and that's the thing, this is a city playground that the school has access to.
Yes.
So to your question too, Mike, again, this is something that if something were to happen to the school, whatever the future plan is, you know, hopefully as a city playground, that will always stay and become more developed for more community activities.
Absolutely.
So again, 100% on board for this, and thank you for getting it done.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I'm glad to hear, or at least generally hear that, you know, most here are supportive of this. So perhaps I don't need to continue to advocate for it. But I think that, you know, as I stated last week, and I probably stated previously, this has been a topic that has come to me personally, oh, probably every year for the last four or five years. And Director Summer and I had talked about this many times. And I think we both were in the same position several years ago when we discussed this, where, you know, we were a bit, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? Hesitant to invest those funds, given that, you know, we both were anticipating a new school. You know, unfortunately, all these years later, we're still, in my opinion, not that much closer today than we were a year ago when we last spoke about this. So I think that's what really brought this to the forefront for me. Obviously, my children play there pretty much every day. So I've kind of witnessed the rapid deterioration of this playground, particularly in the last year, you know, as members of the public have stated. So, I mean, I think this is a good use of funds. I think, you know, it was a surprise to me that when I went to Director Summer's, it's actually currently, or at least it was at the time, hopefully there still is, a sale for this play structure. So there are savings there. I'm hoping that we can, you know, perhaps add a little bit more to that playground, like perhaps some benches, as I've indicated before. So I don't think that this is, you know, a waste of money by any stretch of the imagination, as you just heard. You know, it's probably five to 10 years before we're really looking at the future of that park. So it's five to 10 years of children playing on the structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston, do you want to be the council resource on this, since you brought it up? Perfect, thank you. I don't hear any objection. I hear a lot of consensus. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question. I'm trying to, I guess I'm trying to think about this from the kids' perspective though, because when kids, you know, find out that something new has happened with the playground, of course, bigger, better, they're like, this is up to you. We're gonna get something really cool here. Now, I don't see anything, obviously, because this is just, you know, a preliminary idea to get it on the agenda, $50,000. I just have a question for you. Would $50,000 pretty much cover it as it is, just to repair it as it is? Or is that enough to sort of give us something bigger? And are there set designs for it? Or like, would we sit down, like with a draftsman basically, and just do it? I mean, I'm just trying to think of how we, if we have an opportunity to like make this bigger and better, I mean, how do we go about that?
Well, if you want to make it bigger and better, $50,000 doesn't even touch it. It's gonna be roughly the same design. You have probably a little more climbing apparatuses over there. You'll probably lose the monkey bars, because if most people know, the number one injury on a playground is monkey bars and kids falling off and breaking their arm. You have more slides, bridges, that will stay there. I'll work with the school department, Mrs. Blank, Wendy LeBlank over there, the principal over there, to, you know, design a playground that they would like to see as well. It would be age-appropriate. And again, as you heard from the lady who spoke earlier, you know, the Burns School playground's geared more for the 9 to 12. This playground would be probably geared a little bit more to your 5 to 8-year-old age group. So it will be a little bit smaller and stuff like that. It will be, again, you can go crazy on playgrounds, but $50,000 would pretty much replace it to a better play structure that you're gonna have, that these kids are gonna have today. And understand, if you guys say yes today or tomorrow or whenever, you're looking at about four to six months out before this gets built. You know, they're that far behind. And this will be a spring project before it actually gets into the ground.
Any further questions, discussion? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this is a budget amendment, does it make sense? Do you have any other near-retiring playgrounds? For example, the sled at the Tot Lot, some of our satellite playgrounds. Is there anything else that's kind of retiring now? And it makes more sense to just package that together with one budget amendment, rather than...
I really don't, because what you're doing by taking a sled from another playground that's beginning to end-of-life cycle and so forth, Tot Lot and so forth, you know, you're abandoning it for a year or two. These pieces are one structured base. That Tot Lot is an individual slide anyway. Most of my playgrounds are that we still have around are relatively new. This is the last piece of playground. Burns School's got a new playground in the last 15 years. Young School got a new playground, I believe, in the last 15 years. This one was, like I said, 25 years old. You know, Diamond Riverside is getting a new playground. October 17, I believe, will be going in. So we've worked hard to upgrade all our playgrounds throughout the town. This is the last piece. Again, I was trying to kick it down the road for a couple of years until I knew what the school's gonna do. But as you stated, five to 10 years, this playground, it really becomes a safety concern as you start moving down the road.
So some of our other ones, the reason why I said ask 55 instead of 50 and just knock out some of those outstanding tasks?
No, so I know what you're saying. So you're trying to back me, trying... No, I think, again, every year we in capital, we have 50. We put an amount of money for neighborhood parks. So that would be something that we would take care of in the next budget cycle. But if you want to give me more money, by all means, I'm not saying no.
I'm telling you, we're...
Any further questions for Director Summer? Okay, it seems like there's consensus enough to move this forward, and there's no objections? No objections, okay.
I thank you guys for your support.
This will be on your next agenda. That is it for New Business. That brings us to Item 11, and that is the...
Me.
It seems we had a little agenda issue here, but we're gonna hear from City Administrator Canrath.
Oh, there is no... I'm gonna go anyway. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had two new businesses. We held ribbon cuttings for the last few weeks. Grady's Audio/Video Security Systems recently moved into the storefront at 199 Main Street. Current owners Bill and Brenda are continuing to run a family-owned business that has been in the Bedford-Saco area since 1976. We welcome them. We also held a ribbon cutting and got a great tour of Innovation House on North Street, which provides in-house substance abuse treatment programs for adults. So welcome both those, and congratulations on being part of the Saco local business community. We had our employee appreciation event last Thursday. I just want to thank everyone involved there for making the event a great success. We had a little over 115 employees attend, which is really great attendance. The feedback was overall totally positive. So thank you to everyone for your work there. Welcome two new staff members to the city. Trista Fortier recently started her new position as a customer service representative with the Finance Department. And Ryan Knox recently started as a mechanic in our Public Works Department. So welcome to both of those. We wish them good and long careers here with the city. Our agenda preview for October 17 coming up, we'll have our budget amendment for the HVAC at the Fire Department, budget amendment for the playground you just heard about, street acceptance of Sancho Drive and Jenny Way for a street or one reading, Chapter 81 review for Nine Pearl Avenue, new business, and extra mile day proclamation and award. Lastly, the city has posted an RFP for the wayfinding project. So anyone interested in that, please check out the website for the specs there. And those proposals are due back on October 31st at 11:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Canrath, any questions from the council? No questions. Moving on to what would be Item 12, council discussion and comment. Council discussion and comment. Okay, that brings us to what should be Item 13. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Be it ordered that the City Council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, see economic development discussion with attorney.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch, second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Roll call to enter executive session. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to enter executive session at 7:03. We will take a recess. Let's meet at 7:10 in the downstairs conference room. 7:10 downstairs conference room.